Now, um, the attorney for the applicant at 33 Market Street has requested an adjournment of the hearing for tonight. So we will keep the hearing open and continue it. We'll, we'll do nothing tonight. We will not discuss the application, but we will simply postpone the hearing and continue it at our next meeting, which is going to be January 7th.
We don't need a motion in that regard, do you think, Eric, or what?
I guess that can't hurt. If somebody would like to move that we adjourn, given the request of the, of the attorney for an adjournment, would somebody move that we grant the request, adjourn the hearing, and continue it at the next date, the next meeting, January 7th?
I so moved pursuant to what you just said, Eric.
Second.
Go on, favor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. All right, I just want to welcome Heath to the board and thank him for stepping up to help us out.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Heath. You don't know what you're getting yourself into.
The only other business, the only other business on the agenda tonight is to review the minutes for the last meeting. Shall we take a moment to, to look at them?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Certainly.
All right.
So Eric, on the first page.
Yes.
Just, just down after called the order, the last sentence in that, under that subheading, ZBA just joined the Z and the B together, that's nothing. On the last sentence.
Yes, I see that.
Okay. And then, at the bottom of the page, where it goes during the ZBA discussion, it was noted that, and I, I see that that's a subheading there. And then, if you go into the second page, there's also a subheading for what the attorney for the applicant said, which would be under what's in bold on 33 Market. So I, I, I under, when I look at the, going back to the first page, what the ZBA discussed, I noticed some of the points in there were actually made by the applicant's attorney. So we can go through each sentence in there, because I think we have to sort of clarify. Everything's clear as what the attorney said down here, I believe, in my, as my recollection. But I think there's a bunch of points in here that we need to just spell out better.
All right. Are you like?
Okay, go ahead.
The section about during the ZBA discussion, the bullet points that follow that line are...
Yeah, is that, so is that a discussion among ourselves, or is that jointly opened with the discussion of the?
Clear.
I think we were keep, we, we're just keeping it to ourselves, we are keeping it open for a discourse between us, correct?
If I can ju, if I can jump in, a lot of times, uh, it'll start with the applicant making a presentation, and they'll make a number of points. And then there is board discussion, which, for the most part, doesn't include the applicant. However, at the last meeting, there was lots of back and forth and, and give and take. And so it doesn't fall neatly into the categories that I would like as the minute taker, but, so I tried to express that as best as possible. And maybe you, you just want to have the whole thing under discussion with the applicant, and then all the bullet points could fall under that.
Yeah, Mike, yeah, there's no, I'm not criticizing, because I know we were going back and forth, and it was like, like, hard to follow at times. So I think on that bullet point, Eric, we go during the ZBA discussion with, with, uh, with the applicant and counsel. It was noted that.
Are you?
Well, let me, uh...
Go ahead.
Yeah, let me first make a larger point, and then zoom in on what you're saying, because my, my larger point was going to be, this entire bulleted list here, the one that N starts at the bottom of page one and continues on to page two. It, to me, it appears to mostly be dealing with the board's points, that like, ideas the board was throwing out about how to read the code. Except, I feel like the summaries, the summary is not precise enough to, to, uh, as it is. And I, and I, and I almost feel like we should not, the minutes should not, do not need to get into a complete summary of the legal, because the board has not yet made a, made a decision, a legal, a decision on the conclusion. And I, and I'm, I feel a little nervous about the, the level of detail here, because it's not entirely accurate. And to make it accurate would involve virtually writing our conclusion, which we haven't made yet. The, the, I feel like the level of detail is excessive for the kind of free flowing discussion that was going on.
And so, would you do, how would you revise it, Eric?
I would suggest something like just the board members talked about, well, I would stick to the factual things that the board, I mean, the board's role at, at this point of the discussion was, was mainly to point out factual elements in the code, not to interpret. We were, we pointing it mainly, most importantly, we pointed out the cross references, the fact that there are cross references to 134-17 throughout the various district definitions. And, and that's a merely a factual observation that, that the applicant had not alluded to in his own presentation. And it's key, it's crucial. So I would limit it mainly to that, and possibly then one point about the village, the village's interest, the interest that the village has in regulating fence height in R1 is equally valid in all other districts, including B1.
Based on the cross reference?
Well, no, they, that was just a more, a larger generalization, an assumption that, okay, at least I put forward, and I think is pretty indisputable. Or at least arguable. So, so I would not, the existing bullet points refer to the village interest over and over, and it just is a little bit too vague, and so I would, yeah, so I would probably limit it to just, limit the bulleted list to those two points, because to me, those were the main ones that came out. The cross references and the, the fact that the village has an interest, an equal interest in all the districts.
Yeah, I, I agree with, I have no, no changes to make with the first bullet point there, the sec, let's see the second, the code section shall be applicable, and there is no reason why it should not be. I, I don't know what that's a reference to right there.
Yeah, that, see, that, it, it's just imprecise. I think what, what that's coming out of is the idea that the cross reference in B, in the B1 definition says, apply to incorporate all applicable regulations for 134-17.
Well, I agree with that. So if you want to put that kind of language in there, that's fine, if you, if you wanted to keep that point.
Yeah, okay.
Now, that third point, when you're done, Eric, when you're, let me know when you're done.
Okay.
Okay, the third bullet point, the village may not necessarily invalidate a specific code section. Yeah, what that sort of means, and what it, what was really said there, and I probably said that, is you don't, and I think somebody else actually said it, you don't read the code in a way that it would obviate a, a section, which was your cross reference. And they were saying, they, they were positing that there, there is no fence height. And then they kept harping on the word applicable, I, I don't want to get to, we're, we're not going to get into the arguments, obviously, I'm just dealing with the minutes here, I'm not getting into that. So I think what, what was said here was simply this, in that third bullet point, that you don't interpret the code such that it negates a provision within the code.
Right, right.
You don't interpret the code such that it negates a provision in the code. That, another way of saying is, every code provision has a purpose in there. And, and it's for us to make sure that we identify what that purpose is.
And you used a term, when you were, I remember you mentioning this, John, and you used a term, I forget what it was, but it was, it seemed like a very appropriate way of summarizing that point. Do you remember that, it's like a, like, every, every, like, there's a principle in law that every word has a meaning, was that, I think you said something like that?
Well, yeah, you know, I, right now, I'm blanking on it, and I'll think about that as we go through the rest of the points, I get, I, I was trying to come up with that just a moment ago, it's, but it's in essence, it's that you can't interpret the code such that it negates a provision within the code. It, it's really, you, you know, you just can't do that. Every code provision in there has a reason to be in there unless, you know, the trustees take it out on, on amendments. So you can't, that, so that's simply the way, what it is, I, there is a term for it, I, I'll come up with it by next week, or before we're done here. The fourth point, the fact that the code is not, this is under that same subheading, the fourth bullet point, fact that the code is not completely clear should weigh in the applicant's favor. Now, that was made by the attorney for, of the applicant.
Right, exactly.
And he's, he's correct, he, he's correct in a sense that it's, it, it's something that weighs in favor of the applicant, but it doesn't, and he was right, he used the term weight, but it doesn't, you know, define it. So the village cold spring, the trustees were the drafters of this code. And so if it's not clear, it generally go in an applicant's favor, okay? But, but we found cross references. And, and you do interpret the code as a whole, you don't just interpret everything in isolation. And when you have cross referencing provisions, it explicitly intends looking at all provisions, and, and especially in the R1 district, just as you pointed out.
Okay, so shall we just move that bulleted point into the previous bulleted list, which is the attorney's, the attorney's presentation?
Yeah, I, I would do something like that, that, that is what that, the attorney said.
Because the wording here, the fact that the code is not completely clear, that's a, I mean, that's a polemical statement, that's a, a statement of position, it's not on a...
Well, you know, you know what, this is what they say legally, if there's any ambiguity, any ambiguity in the code provisions, if it, if there appears to be ambiguity, it would weigh in the applicant's favor, but there is no ambiguity here, because you had the cross referencing provisions. But that, but the argument was made by that attorney.
Right, well, he, he brought that point up, and that's a valid, I think that's one of the bedrocks of ZBA law, which is ambiguities should be resolved in favor of the applicant, so, or the property owner.
So do we, do we keep that, do we keep that bullet point there, or should we say the applicant's counsel advise?
Move it up, like I said, I would move it up into the previous bulleted list, which is the, that's explicitly attributed to the attorney.
It is, the only thing that's funny about it, I guess, is that, that those top bullets are just kind of laying out the application, they're very, just sort of stepping through properties and the residents of the B1 district, and, and that bullet is much more fitting the argument. And so maybe it's okay, it just seems a little bit, um, it just seems a little bit out of place.
Well, there's a point to be taken on that, so the question is, what do you really want to include it? It is a comment they, he made, I don't know if you would want to include it. But yeah, I mean, I was thinking a term to use is that, you know, the following issues were considered, were discussed. We could have said something like that, but it, it does sort of say ZBA discussion with the applicant and counsel on the subheading, but there's a point to what you say, it's, you know, is this really just argument? Right?
We could have another section, but something like the attorney responded to, with, you know, responded to the words.
Yeah, the attorney is just below, all his comments were in the next section, just below, if you, when we get to that point.
Just, just...
Yeah, that was about the variants.
Correct. The, the previous bulleted list does contain some assertions, some argue, argument of the second bulleted point, under the attorney's name, says that
Oh, yeah.
there is no stricture in the code for the B1 district, so that's a, a mere, that's a contention, it's not a fact.
Yeah, okay, if, if moving it there is fine.
Okay, so the next bulleted item, it reads, the fact that there are six-foot fences in B1 is not a factor. See, again, that's the, that, that was something the board said. It's a little, a little too broadly stated here, it's not that it's a zero factor, it's just that, I, I think we, what we said, actually said was that the more important question is, how did they get there?
And, and nuisance factors are issues on that, yeah, I mean, each one is...
Yep, right, each one would have, each one probably had a different history, and what was the history, right, just the fact that the existence, but it's, the state, the statement's not exactly wrong the way it is, it's just a little too broad.
And I know we said it that way, I can remember, so Mike, you know, Mike was just going with what we said, but I think you're correct, I, I thought to change this one too, so, but the way you were going, I'll, I'll listen to what you, you come up with, Eric, I mean, I was agreeing with where you were going on that.
I, I would say something like, the, the existence of any six-foot fences in the B1 district would be less relevant than the history of how they got there, or something like that.
That's right, I agree with that. And, and, you know, whether it be nuisances, or, you know, or whatever other proof the applicant had.
The last item. See, this is a little bit garbled, the, the first phrase is, is a contention that the attorney might have made, the code of B1 district doesn't have a specific fence height limitation. But, but this, then it does get into the cross references, which is the important point.
So I would just, go ahead, Eric.
Well, I would just convert this into a, a, a reference to the fact that there are the cross references, or...
That's right, that's what I was gonna say.
Just pointing out their, their existence, a merely factual statement that they're there.
So it's just say, the, I would just say the code, uh, cup, you know, for the B1 district has cross references to the R1 districts in, and we are interpreting whether or not the fence heights of the R1 district would be applicable, or we've already, you know, I'm not saying we already decided it, nobody decided that at this point yet, right?
Yeah.
Did we come down with a definitive statement finding in that way? I think we had to finish our, our interpretation, right?
I don't think we've, no, we did not vote on the interpretation.
Okay. So I think where you were going with that, that was fine, so you want to...
I would just, turning to the rest of the minutes, one general change that I think needs to be made, all the references to the plural public hearings, two hearings, should be changed to singular, and that was my misunderstanding, when I wrote the agenda, I referred to two hearings, but John first later corrected me to say that technically, we should think of it as a single, it's a single hearing on both, both issues. So I'm just going to change where the plural hearings to singular hearing throughout the minutes, it's just one hearing. And then, um, going back on page one, under call to order, second paragraph, Jay first commented that lacking the response, the ZBA can hold the public hearing, but will not be able to, and then there's a confusing vote on the variance, but can vote on the variance. In fact, I think what he said was, cannot take any action, the, the board cannot take, since we did not have the response from Putnam County, we could not take any action, we could hold the hearing.
That's right, correct.
I would just change everything from vote on the variance to the end, just change that to take any action.
Agreed.
May I ask, is, is there an expectation that the county is going to weigh in?
We'll talk about that at the next meeting, because I would, that would fall under the heading of, um, getting into the, the application itself.
Okay, that makes sense.
And then, under board discussion, bottom of page two, it says, the mayor has met with a candidate, but he, he did not meet, I, to my, the, the correct Heath, he didn't, it's referring to you here.
Right, I, I can actually answer that one, no, we did not meet.
Yeah, okay, and I, we didn't say so in the meeting either, I, I don't think. So I just change it to something like, the mayor is considering a candidate to fill one of the open positions.
And I'll ask this in a way, so it doesn't reflect anything else, but in that, going back to that first paragraph, attending were, so it is just the, the board as it was existing then, was, was Eric, you as the chair, and Laura and John?
Yes.
That's it.
Previous, okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Does anyone else have anything to? I, twice, the minutes refer to a certificate of authority from the HTRB, I'll change that to certificate of appropriateness, because that's, I believe that's the correct term.
That's correct. Go ahead, Laura.
The, the 239 referral, is it possible to make that more specific of what the, is that a part of the code?
Yeah, that's the name of the clause in New York State law that requires certain requests for variances to be referred to the county. So yeah, that should be made something more understandable. So maybe it can say something like, regarding the referral of this variance request to the county planning department. I mean, that...
You could do that, and then have like parentheses, quote, 239 referral.
Yeah.
And that way someone who doesn't, it, yes, it, it explains the meaning of it for someone who's new to the issue, that would be cool.
I was just wondering, why would the county want to get involved in this? I mean, I know we have to do it anyway, but, you know, it's a six-foot fence application, I'm trying to remember how that fits into...
Yeah, the, you, if you look up 239M, letter M as in Mary, that's the actual, it's, and read it, it's pretty clear, it says that any variance request that falls within certain number of feet of a border, a municipal border, must be referred to the county planning agency. And, and this, this request is, falls, and it's near the water, this property is near the...
Yeah, that's why I was asking, that's interesting, this is the first time that we've come up with the 239, because, well, I've been on the board, because it was near the water.
Yeah. And then I, John first said that counts as the village border.
Well, that's interesting, because I think we also did, if you know those buildings, the apartments right on that same, on, not on that street, but on the street all the way on the waterfront, there were new apartments, you know, refurbished old building turned into, with all those patios out in the front, on the north end. I don't remember that going on a 239, and that would be right on the water, too. But anyway, so we, we take this all into consideration, I always thought, you know, if it's on a border, I guess it's whatever people can see from the river, that makes it an issue, right?
Well, I think the village does technically have a border that, right there along the edge of the river, so...
Yeah, but I'm just talking about the logic of, the logic of the provision is such that, you know, an individual municipality, if it like borders, you know, on Nelsonville, that Nelsonville with people living nearby would definitely see, or be potentially affected by the type of variances we might be putting up, that may be different from their own, or seemingly in their mindset more egregious, you know, to, to, to permit. So anyway, I, I'm just making a general comment, so it's interesting that we'll just do this, this way, going forward, just to be safe.
Yeah, we, we can get more into that, maybe at the next meeting, when John first is here, and explore the, the logic there, and especially in the light of the county's response.
I don't know if the fifth bullet was already adjusted, but fence would start approximately 60 feet from Market Street, did we strike either is or would?
I think it should be and, and would not be visible, that was the point that they were making, that you can't.
Okay, that's, you're right, Laura, yeah?
Yes. Yeah, I'll change that. Does anyone have anything else?
I'll move, Laura, do you have anything else?
No. No, that's it.
Well, I'll move to approve these minutes of 12:03, as amended pursuant to our discussion, and, and, and Eric's markings on the revisions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right? Does anyone have any other business to bring up tonight?
Are we still looking for another ZBA member, or is there?
I believe so, I have not heard otherwise.
I, I didn't take any action, I'll try to do that now, I just, it, it got so close that I thought maybe, um, there would be someone else, you know, in the process, so I'll, I'll start reaching out again.
Is there a women's group that... Is there a women's group that offhand in, with all due respect, like in, in Cold Spring, such that we could make sure that then the applicant is, is, is a woman? You know, or, you know, some, you know, to balance out the board.
I don't, there may be. I don't know. What I had thought of was to reach out to a couple of the, the trustees. But both women and ask them since they are, you know, that they might know of, of someone. That was, that was the strategy that I thought of, but I didn't. I'll reach out to them now.
Okay.
But if you know of anyone else, now that you're part of it, you can recruit more. I, I, through advocate at last meeting to, to bring on another woman.
Makes sense, yeah. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll think about it and let you all know. If that's the case, would it, is it preferable due to the next meeting? Is it best just to email? Versus bringing it up during the next meeting or i- is it fine to just? I mean, I know we're trying to accelerate. It sounds like trying to accelerate the process.
What Dave Brandy told me is that anyone who's interested should send him a letter of interest and a resume.
Okay.
So you don't have to bring it to us first. It's, it's really the trustees and, and him who, who make the decision.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the evening as a, a, a nice time boarding personally. So, thank you all.
Thanks for joining.
Nice, easy first meeting for you.
Yeah, I appreciate this.
I, I was the, I'm the since I joined recently, also less than a year ago and but I joined for like a couple of the, the really intense, you know, get out at 11:30 PM meetings. I think that happened a couple of times. So anyway, you, you're getting, I'm glad you're
Getting an official snow day meeting, yeah.
You can bring a mask to the meeting so that nobody recognizes you, you know? And this way you stay friends with everybody in the neighborhood.
Right, right.
Listen, we're, we're here doing a, a good job in a sense. So we're, all we're doing is trying to follow the code and interpret it. And that's all we're, we're, our, our jobs are. We, there was something that Aaron Wolf, who just preceded Eric as chairman. And he would say and start each meeting with, you know, we're volunteers. You know, you know, appointed by the mayor. You know, just to make it clear to people, we're not being paid. We're not doing this because we, you know, this is how we get our kicks. You know, we, we're just doing it to be civil minded. And, 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 you know, as you could see, people are not knocking down the doors to be jumping on these boards, so. And, and, and really it is, it is, it's a tough position. And I mean, tough in a sense that you know, the rewards are not many, except for you get to know a lot of people. The question is whether you get to know them on a good basis.
It's been important to get to, you know, as a fairly new member of the community, it's been important to be, be more involved and be a good neighbor. So hopefully to your point, this is considered just that, being a good neighbor, even if
And you'll meet a lot of people. You'll, 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 you'll make a lot of connections through it. So it's worthwhile in that. And we're, we're glad you joined, really, I, I am, so.
That's, we're very glad. I think it also like we take it seriously and I think that in that certainly something that Eric has the new chair is, is carrying that through of like really, you see that in the minutes, like thinking really critically about everything. And so I think that's a helpful contribution to the village as well as, as sort of holding this as a yeah, just that, that we, we don't, we don't take it lightly.
Yeah, makes sense.
So welcome and thank you, Eric, for all you do and Laura and Michael Mel. And happy holidays.
Will someone like to move to, we adjourn the meeting?
I'll move to adjourn it.
I'll second it.
Yay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
See you on the, on Main Street, up there.
Yeah.